Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
6:30 PM on September 22, 2021. This Wednesday, I will now call to order the meeting of the Westminster Select Board.
Recording in progress.
Alexa.
Creepy.
Hey Kevin, Darlene said she's not being let in. I don't know if there are other people.
Okay, we will.
Okay.
Thank you Cindy.
Well set.
Darlene, you with us?
She's connecting right now, I can see it.
So pretty flowers.
You want me to turn it down a little bit?
Please.
Just a touch, appreciate it though. Thank you. Is she there? Darlene?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. Thanks for being here. Okay. We have called to order, now adjustments to the agenda.
I need to add one more cemetery deed under 6F, so there would be a total of three.
And I just want to make a comment probably under new business about welcome packets to the town.
Do you want to put it under other business?
Or, or new business.
What's your pleasure?
New business.
New business it is. Welcome packets. Okay. Moving on, acceptance of minutes, September 8, 2021.
Move that we accept the minutes, having been September 8 as printed?
Motion to accept the minutes of September 8, 2021 have been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I abstain, I was not there.
Okay. One abstention. Toby Young was not present. Thank you Toby. Minutes are hereby adopted. Thank you. Okay, communication and public comments. School district invoice, Mr. David Major.
Hi. First, I have happy news to report that last Wednesday, after a great deal of patience and perseverance by citizens of this town, the State Board of Education did their final okay about us having, regaining our town's school district. So that is a done deal at this point. We will be at town meeting time, voting on the budget for the, for the next school year, starting July 1. We'll also be voting on, on school board members, electing school board members. So, so anyway, congratulations to all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, the, I think, I mentioned this school district invoice, and I think it's for expenses that the town has, I've mentioned it to some of the other board members, and we're meeting tomorrow night. But I, I, I need to hear what the expenses are and pass it on and have it discussed at the school board meeting tomorrow night, so that we can come up with the funds or come up with whatever we feel is fair, or, you know, depending on what the, what it is, what the invoice is, so.
I have my copies right there.
Great.
I have others, but there's definitely packets right there.
So this is, if you don't mind, just, I'm making sure I understand it. Absence of tax rate. Oh, it was because an additional mailing had to be sent out, is that right?
That's correct.
And so that's, those are two, two items of that amount.
Correct.
And then, just recently, the elections. The elections, okay, printing the ballots. Okay, and are there no, there's no legal fees in here?
We've incurred all of those and they're paid.
Okay. All right, well, what I'll do, if it's okay with you, is just take this to the joint unified district board meeting and Westminster School District Board meeting, which are tomorrow night, and, and get back to you about, does that sound fair?
That's more than fair.
Okay. I, I do see that there's an additional under 6D item invoice for school district. Are you going to be skipping over that? Should I stay around for that item?
I put it there in case they had to, to vote to approve whatever you told them. So, they can't, under communications and public comments, so I put it there. But if you don't have any information for them, then that's probably going to just be tabled.
Correct. Unless there's any comment from the public at this time on school district invoice? Saying none also, thank you.
Sorry Kevin, it's Cindy, I do have a comment. I think I mentioned it to you, and I mentioned it to Russ at one point. I don't know if the board is aware, but this town does get a portion of money for collecting school property taxes every year. It's a deduction from the payment they have to send to the school anyways. So, I don't know if that's been taken into consideration as part of this invoice. It's on the cash flow statement from the state of Vermont. This year, it's nine, $9,633 that you get to deduct from what you owe the school for property taxes.
Okay. But Cindy, in the past, we've always had that. It was always to do the paperwork, prepare. This was something that was never part of the past.
Well, the, the first, maybe not the election part, but the part where they had to do the rebuild because of the tax rate not being ready.
Correct.
That's what this money is for, is for revisions of property tax bills, producing the tax bills, mailing them out and all of that. That was the intent of this, the town, to be able to keep a portion of the school property taxes to help the administrative costs for the town.
But go back to my thing, we've already included those because we, regular election, in the regular election, in, in the regular tax bill, there's money in there to do that. Now, this is not the regular, this is above and beyond. You see what I'm saying?
I don't know, I don't know that the rebuild for the tax rate not being ready was above and beyond, but maybe that's just a debate that I don't agree, and you guys don't agree with me, but.
It's, it's a discussion.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to be sure that, that the people that are new on the board realized that this is a, an amount that the town gets to keep every single year for the administrative costs for the school district, district collection of property taxes, if they were not aware of that.
Correct, I don't disagree with that at all.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here, and thank you for addressing that specific item that you had already brought to our attention. And thank you for your counsel as always, thank you. That will be taken under consideration in this matter. Any other comments from the public? Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to unfinished business. American Rescue Plan, Act ARPA COVID Local Recovery Funds update.
We have 12 members, I got one today, Paul Cody would like to be added to the list. We are meeting Tuesday at 5:30, which is the 28th of September. It is going to be in person and by Zoom. I've never done, hosted a meeting before, so it's going to be interesting, but Pauline has, so she's going to help me. We did get, two days ago, a, an email from Margot Gaya from Wyndham Regional that gave us some reporting deadlines that the committee will be taking into consideration. I have a bunch of copies, if you're interested in them. If not, then I'll just pass them out to the committee members. But again, it gives us some highlights to, to reach throughout the years to actually obtain the funds that have been promised to us. So, are you interested?
I think I saw it, you forwarded it.
I did.
Yeah.
I did, but I, I printed a bunch of copies.
Yeah, thank you.
For folks that are interested, so.
Thank you. Okay, any comment from Select Board? Any comment from the general public? Okay, well done, we have an excellent list of citizens to begin that work, and thank you Russell for getting that assembled. Moving on to Hartley Hill Road, private section update, if any.
I passed the whole file.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry Russ.
No problem.
Thank you.
I passed the whole Hartley Hill Road file to legal counsel. I think it was on Wednesday, today's Wednesday, so it had to be Tuesday. And so they are working on it. I did get a phone call from Robert Wickberg, and he hadn't heard anything, so they're working on it. That's all I can pass along at this point.
Okay. Any comments from the board? General public? Okay. Moving on to collaborative finance processing manual, update.
At this point, we hadn't gone much further. We are, at the last meeting, we now have an assistant treasurer, and Darlene and Paul are working on the final touches to put into the.
John has a lot of the paperwork that I've done, and she's, she's in the process of, of going through it and, and bringing it out in legible forms and taking.
I actually have documented two procedures that I did when I did the bank reconciliation. This month, I put that out all on paper, and how to, you know, how to reconcile the quarterly reports. So, I have started all of that, and I've taken Paul's notes from the office today, and will retype them and start that, the accounts payable functions and the cash receipts. So, I will have those done by the next meeting.
Terrific, thank you both. Any questions or comments from the board?
No, that's great.
That's very good. General public, any comments? Anything to add? Darlene, thank you. Okay, moving on to the five-year capital plan, update.
I guess I, I'll comment on that. Chuck just gave me, you know, Chuck and I met about upgrades to the town garage that we're looking at in the future, and I asked Chuck to estimate, and he's given them to me. I don't think we have any other projects or parts of the capital plan yet, is that correct?
Yeah, because you, I didn't go with Chuck, the insulation guy came today.
Ah, right.
By coincidence, so.
Yeah.
We went in and did the community house, then he left to go look at what insulation Chuck would be looking at at his place. I guess the good news was, he was kind of happy we didn't paint the clapboards, because that is how he would get in to insulate it.
Yeah.
There's, you know, almost no insulation at all in that building, but he made it sound likely to be a, the building, what he saw of the building, he thought was pretty pressed. He said, you got a good sound building right here, makes a lot of sense what we're trying to do. He's going to come back with some suggestions, because if you remember, there's a cement wall, impartial, impartial way down. He says you could put a, a wall, subwall over that with some insulation at the same time on the inside, which he would suggest. He'll come back with a breakdown.
Yeah.
But that's how they would basically do this, coming from the outside clapboards and do it that way.
Well, you know, I originally had this idea that we would have this big plan, and you know, all the projects and all the estimates, and prioritize, I doubt we're going to get to that for budget, but I, but I am going to recommend or suggest that replacement of the fuel tanks happened this year, Chuck seems to think that's the most important thing. Yes, am I correct?
Yes.
So, where we decide to ask for that money, if you just talk about it later.
I think we, yeah, the community house has to be like a package, so I'm meeting Monday with the new oil person that's going to give us, look at the chimney, look at everything, give us an estimate for heat, so I can put together the insulation and the heat, because that's the next major step, is to insulate the building and turn the heat on. We need to have all those numbers so we can go and march to the voters. Part of it would be the committee itself, come up with ideas, what will we do once we did get the heat on and get the insulation?
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Any more comments? General public? Okay. Moving on to the front steps, a repair proposal.
In your packet, you have the Brennan proposal, the concrete repair, the grinding, and the leveling would be by the contractor, and he's asking for $1,400 to paint the two coats of solid resistant paint. And he also attached in your packet a letter that suggests, as suggested, I contacted Carroll Concrete to inquire about the concrete repair. They assured me that they do not install any products they adjust to supplier. They carry a structural patching compound, which is a popular product that can be found on the shelf at Home Depot. I believe patching and painting with the steps of the chemical resistant paint is the best option at this point. The only other option is to jackhammer the top layer off the entire step and pour a thin layer of concrete with only fine aggregates. Either way, the, the use of heavy, the heavy use of salt will probably continue to compromise the steps over time. Doing small repairs now will allow for the option of not doing a large repair years down the road. The paint should provide protection against salt, and it can be assessed and reapplied yearly if needed. So, I, I need your thoughts. He gave me a brochure of the colors and etc., multiple colors.
How much does this product cost, I mean, $1,400? You think if we get, if the product isn't harmful, we could get people to even donate time to put it on. Seems like $1,400, less than the product costs a thousand bucks.
I, I don't know, you didn't break it down, that's what, what you got is what I got.
And we would be paying for this, the town?
That's what he's asking, is that we, we pay the painting, and he will grind and patch.
For?
It's free.
Eight hundred dollars, he's going to do a repair because it was his.
Yeah, 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 that's what I meant.
Right, yeah. I don't know, I, I just have a hard time with $1,400. Even, even, like I said, if we had to purchase the paint and he purchased the labor, you know what I'm saying? So, there's not money out of his pocket other than his labor, is what I would be coming back to ask for. That's just me. So I'm assuming it's three, four, or $500 for paint, I don't know what it is, but.
It's expensive stuff.
It could be.
And that's two gallons.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
So we buy it?
I think it's eight gallons that he's, that's figuring out.
Because we basically would own all the paint, we would make sure we kept putting it on until it used it all up, and decide to paint, and he would just furnish the labor. Since he's in there doing the repairs anyway, so. Then there's no physical money, I guess, out of his pocket, other than his labor. But that's just where I'm coming from.
Any other comments, please?
I'm not real excited to spend any money on it, to be honest with you, but we've already spent it once. I think if it was done right, and sealed, as suggested, we wouldn't be here right now. I, I agree. But it is going to get worse, so. It's not going to fix itself. Exactly.
Any other comments?
We get time for him to come back with an answer?
Yeah, aye.
What's your, if you'll pay for the whole thing, is that, is that what we're asking?
He's, I, I, don't, don't let me put words in your mouth, but you just said that we will buy the paint and he.
That's only where I'm coming from.
And he paints it.
That's only where I'm coming from. Obviously, first you would say, we're shocked that we're paying anything.
I, I've already told him that, and I, I told his father that.
I think probably correct suggestion's a good middle of the road, though. If we're going to need to reapply two years or a year later, at least we own the product, providing it doesn't go bad, open or whatever.
We would control how much goes on. If all of a sudden you only use four gallons, and we already paid $1,400, we're not getting a good deal. But on the other hand, buy it all, we own it, and he furnishes the labor to put it on. Because we didn't get that product put on in the first place, that he probably would have billed us to put it on, so. Right? That's just what.
Well, I think a sealer upfront would be considerably less money than $1,400.
If put on upfront. Don't know, but I would assume so.
I'd like to push him to do the whole deal, but if he fights back hard, then we'll go that way. I mean, I'm.
Any other comments about asking him to push back and ask him to do it for nothing? Right?
They have a comment.
Please.
I just want people to be, you know, we need to pay, keep in mind that with new concrete, you're supposed to wait 30 days before you paint it.
Thank you Fran.
You're welcome.
So, do we want to, Russ, you're going to go back and?
Well, the other thing is our window of good weather is going to shorten by the day, so.
I mean, he's got to prove, we must, for the $800 that we're not going to spend to go ahead and fix it.
Yeah.
So that's a separate item, so he could go ahead and do that, but, yeah.
You still need to, you still need to seal it to protect it, sometimes, sometimes.
There's no question.
So my thought is, is he's come in to repair, he wants to complete, you know, regularly. So, if you, if you swap the two, we, we apply, he buys paint? I think for the town, it's a better deal. I think the paint is a lot more than labor. I'm just guessing, but I don't.
Me, knows when we're all done, if we got volunteer help, we'd be free, is what you're saying.
When he comes, he will finish and be gone, and then it's up to us to, to apply that stuff.
But he would purchase the paint.
Exactly.
I, I'd leave it to you to go back and negotiate.
All right, I'll, I'll negotiate, but do I have permission to, to do what?
For me, but, yeah.
Spend up two? I need, I need at least a rough guess of what I can spend. Do I have permission to spend all?
So you're saying he, you're talking, have him do the repair?
If you're going to split the, the stuff, so instead of having him come repair, patch, we negotiate the $1,400 at a separate date, then he's got to come back to, to apply it. If we negotiate and we, we buy, we do the labor, he buys the paint, then he's done, one shot, he's out of here, and we can apply it on a really nice warm day and soon, and get it, get it done.
But I thought Craig said he wanted us to buy the paint.
That's what I'm saying, is I'm trying to switch that so that it gets done in one.
It, it is, that way, there's no money out of our pocket, is what you're saying. In other words, he would furnish everything, we would furnish the labor, there is no money.
That's correct.
I have no problem with that either.
That's correct.
Neither do I. Do you have a consensus on the board?
Yes.
Does Chuck have anything to say? He's probably going to be the one putting it on. I mean, time-wise, health-wise, it's.
We're so far behind now.
I was going to say, I'll, I'll do the paint, don't worry about that.
We should, it shouldn't be, just, it shouldn't be just a quote from the town, we can find some options. We'll make it on a Saturday.
Okay, well, well set?
Skip four in the day.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
Great, moving on, new business, discussion, action. The financial discussion, very good to have Darlene Kelly and Cindy started with us. Darlene?
First of all, did you guys get the packet that I asked Russ to print out for you late in the day? With the balance sheet, a budget status report, and some comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, I suggest maybe we first look at the balance sheet. I don't know if you get this on a regular basis, but I think it's a very important piece of your financials when you're looking at them each time, because it really shows you where your cash is, and what you may owe out in liabilities to things, and it goes hand in hand with your budget status. So if you've only been looking at that budget status, I think you're miss, only getting half of the picture. You're not getting your whole financial picture. So I think this is a key document to go along with your budget status report. So I'm just going to kind of run through it just a little bit, so that new folks, or if it's new to anyone looking at it, they kind of understand what I look at when I'm looking at it. So, the first line that I would see is your Mascoma checking account. After paying the school today, you have 1.843 million, uh, 45, our reports are little, sorry, million dollars in the bank.
Darlene, what page?
Yeah, I think they're scrambling to find.
Yep, so it's the but, balance sheet, if you look at the balance sheet, it says one of two at the very top. So it's balance sheet, current year, period, three.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Ah, okay.
So this tells, does everybody see where I'm looking at the 1,845,000?
Yes. Everybody have that?
So that is your general fund checking account that houses most of your money for the town. Although, some of the other funds' money might be housed in that bank account. The primary money is at Mascoma, and often is used for your accounts payable, paying your bills, and potentially paying things out of other funds as well. But that's where, if you were to look at your bank account as of today, that's how much money you have in the bank. You still owe the fire district, because we hadn't, we just did that today, I hadn't booked it. So, that comes down under your liabilities of what you, money you still owe out. So this is telling me taxpayers have overpaid taxes in the amount of $12,000. So at the end of the year, you either issue a refund to the taxpayer if they request, or you bring it forward to fiscal year '23. But right as they stand, those are not money you get to show as revenue. It is really owed out to the taxpayer at any point in time. They can request a refund of their overpayment. And as we go down, your other liabilities are, the 139 is roughly a little less than that we determined today is due to the fire district, which I believe Paul transferred today, so I will book that entry. And then, kind of going down through. And then, kind of going down through. So the other big piece I think that's important to look at is on page two. Is the fund balance section of the report. So this tells me, last year, we ended the year. Um, unless Chad comes back with any other major, um, changes to the fund balance, we carried forward. Four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars and forty-eight cents. It's basically savings that have built up over the years from having a surplus on your budget. From year to year, you're carrying forward. So you're carrying almost a half a million dollars of savings forward from year to year in your budget by not spending it. That's a huge amount for a town. So, that is.
Can I just interject, can I just interject something, Darlene? And remember, when she says the four seventy-four, that is not your emergency fund, that is not any of your other reserved. That's unreserved fund balance. Out of that, you guys had a hundred thousand you're gonna use towards taxes this year, so you carried forward almost four hundred thousand dollars in surplus. So when we talk about the balance sheet for the general fund, that's unreserved, just cash on hand. I mean, is that right, Darlene? Is that, am I saying that?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's kind of the balance sheet. But again, I think it's important to always have that with your budget status report. So, the, the other big report, one out of nine, is the budget status report that you're used to getting, probably when Russ gives you a financial. Um, statements, I assume you're getting this whole budget status report when he gives that to you. So I'm not gonna go over this too much in depth, because I feel like you've seen it, you kind of are, um, aware. So I kind of just did an overview in a summary form of the things that I looked at as I was going through this budget status report, and I thought. You know, maybe if, if we, we like proceeding this way, i- it could be, this is what I'm seeing on a month or quarterly. Basis based on your, um, your budget status. What am I noting that looks, um, within reason for the period we're reporting? What is, looks a little high to me? So, what I, so I just did this simple summary today that, uh, I noted that you have. Your property tax collection is about fifty percent of the budget for the first payment, which makes sense. I also went then into the tax administration module and ran your delinquent tax report, cause I wanted to see. Where did that stand in comparison to your budget and to what, what you still, um, have to collect? So what I noticed is there's almost a hundred thousand dollars still to be paid from payment one. So folks didn't pay, that's what is still outstanding from payment one. And your delinquent taxes from last year are fifty, almost fifty-one thousand dollars. So when you're looking at that delinquency, you, that's another piece, as you look at your budget. And what you've collected and what is due from prior years, that could be, you know, you've budgeted. Eighty thousand dollars in delinquent taxes and you've collected forty-five already, and you still potentially have another fifty-one to collect. So there's a chance that that. You know, as you budget for that next year, that may be, you wanna adjust that a bit, because that's almost ninety, what, ninety? Six thousand dollars and you're budgeting about eighty. So, those are the kind of things that I just look at, like, I, I think it's important to look at all modules in the financial system. Not just taking this budget status report, because it tells you a complete picture of what. Is all happening, not just what your expenditures and what little bit of revenue you might have on your budget status. So, I noted that you got your ARPA money. Your ARPA money is sitting in a separate fund by itself, but you got almost four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in ARPA money. Um, the cash sits in your Masoma account, but the money sits in a fund, so there's a due-to-do from, so that tells me that. The general fund knows that it, the money belongs to another fund, but the general fund can use that money. If needed, until that fund needs it and starts spending it. And that's typical in an, in a nonprofit, um, government entity, this due-to-do-from is, it's, that's how it operates. That is legal and that is how the financials work. Um, you have miscellaneous revenue that's over budget, so you got, um, about thirty-five hundred dollars in there. Looked like an audit from workers' comp refunded you some money and an oil spill cleanup. Um, other than that, the rest of your revenue seem to be on target, so what I'm looking at is. It's a quarter of your fini, of your budget, cause you're about to cor, um, fiscal, uh, sorry, a calendar quarter end. And so I'm looking at twenty-five percent's kind of the target that I'm looking at when I'm looking at expenditures and revenues. So when I looked at the expenditures, I'm just looking at wha, what looks a little high. So I looked through a couple things, I don't think they're super concerning, but, you know, you're seeing that, um, you got. Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you've paid out for the storm. Um, it's sitting in a selectmen category of your budget actual, I think we should move that, I don't think it should sit there in the selectmen section. Um, but that's what you spent so far on the storm for August. Um, and then your clerical and election supplies are a little high, your guardrails are over budget already. So, that's something to, um, kind of keep an eye on. And your social services payments haven't been made, I just noted that, so. Um, so that was kind of like, when I'm looking at what I see going on in your financial statements. As of, not a lot this quarter typically for municipality, um, but as you get to the next. Quarter and start to think about budgeting, you wanna look at this again. Does anybody have any questions?
First, yeah, I wanna thank you for a really clear, concise and coherent synopsis, this is wonderful, and all your fine work. Um, I did wanna ask, the twenty-five percent, um, benchmark, is that, um, something you guys, in your expertise, find is really where most? The towns just are usually, um, you know, are, are at?
Year-to-date.
To me, it's just simple math, it's a quarter of the year, so that's why I did it, so. Now, and some of the expenses don't flow like that, you know, like you're paying, you're after, often paying a lot of your dues up, upfront. Your, um, you know, your benefits don't ebb and flow right at a quarter of a percent, so it's just a little benchmark I personally use in, in analysis of financials and. Just making sure that seems reasonable, and the, you know, there's gonna be align items that are a hundred percent already, because. You're due to pay them at the beginning of the year, and so that makes sense, but I would look at those and look what the description is and say. Does that make sense that that's already at a hundred percent, you know? So like I saw, VLCT was at a hundred percent, you, you had to pay their dues right off. That made sense to me, so it's like, yeah, that's gonna happen, you know? So the things, like I said, just a few of these were what caught my eye, that they're already at fifty or above, or close to that in, in the expenditure. Percentage, so that's why I noted them.
Anything, um, in this, um, review though, or otherwise, that you found, that you find, um. It's very, very important that you are uncomfortable with?
Not uncomfortable with, um, I think it's important that the board pays attention to the next section of my summary of all of those fund balances. Um, we, and I'm gonna say this, we as, cause I'm a taxpayer as well. This is a lot of money, this is a lot of money to, to have, and we've done. Well, I would say in, um, building some funds and reserves. But I, I question. How you, like, how are you gonna use these and why do we need to keep building them? This is a lot of money to have for projects, and that's why that's concerning to me, and then. Why we borrowed money when we have this kind of fund balance is kind of baffling to me from a financial world that I live in. I didn't understand that, I personally don't agree with it, because we have a lot of cash that we could borrow from ourselves. And even though the interest rate is low, why pay any when we can use our own money to do the projects? So that was, that's my concern, and just planning, what is this money gonna be used for? Do we have plans for this money? The ARPA money's, I get, that's still in the works, but, and the reappraisal money, but the rest of the, like. Is this working into our budget? I feel like we just keep adding to our budget and not using what we already have.
Thank you very much for your opinion, both professionally and as a fellow taxpayer, and all your hard work. Um, comments? Questions?
Well, I have a comment, for some of these funds, um, some of the projects that we're going to put money on are pretty extensive. For instance, the bridge rehabilitation fund, um, the West West Bridge, what's that gonna cost us, Russ?
Saxons River is coming up first, and that is in the like fifty-five thousand dollar range.
Right.
And then the, uh, East Putney. Brook, right? East Putney Brook Bridge is in the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar range for our portion.
Right, so that's gonna be a big one, and, um, the garage fund, we've been talking, that's only sixty-three thousand, but. Um, I've been trying to talk about upgrades that the town garage needs, starting with, uh, replacement of the fuel tanks, which is going to be sixty-one thousand dollars. So that's gonna take everything we have in the town garage fund now. So the idea, a lot of those funds is, instead of waiting until it's time to pay. Is to put some money aside, and I'd argue, some of the ones we have not put enough money aside yet. Um, but I think, when we talk about the capital plan, what I'm hoping is we would have an idea of when we're gonna spend that money. It's probably not gonna be this year, but, um, yeah, I, I, that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Now then, it's Cynthia, can I say something? So, um, in going back to what Darlene said, and I agree, Susan, that I think part of the struggle has been. We as taxpayers haven't seen the capital plan that you're talking about, so that's being worked on, and that's gonna be really good information for us to have. To understand what the funds that are being set aside for future expenses are for. So I totally am on board with that, that's something I think that should be done, and, and there is a part of me that believes. The way that you do, that there's probably not enough money put in there right now. For some capital expenditures in the future, it's just really hard for us as a, as, and you too, to see that without this plan. So I'm glad the plan's being worked on. My issue, as, as, uh, looking at it from a financial perspective, is not so much, I mean. These funds are important for you guys to see on a regular basis what the balances are in them, I think it's something that maybe you haven't had. Complete picture in the past of, and, and to know that this is cash on hand. Like Darlene said, that you can borrow from yourself instead of a bank. Um, but my bigger concern is that at the end of FY twenty-one, you had almost four hundred thousand dollars in undesignedated fund balance. You then had a hundred and fifty thousand in a contingency, the emergency fund. And then you went out and borrowed money, even though you had almost a half a million dollars in cash. And there's been discussion between me and a couple board members just chatting about it, and just between Darlene and I. Of that, I didn't understand that myself, you had the cash on hand, so I wasn't clear. If you guys really understood how the system works with tracking all of that. You borrow from yourself before you go to a bank. My bigger concern is coming up to budget season, is that you will, there is no way. That we will have reimbursed, been reimbursed by any funding agency for the cost of this storm. By town meeting, I just can't even see it happening, I don't even know if a declaration has been finished yet by the, the feds or not, but. So what is, we can't, lo, short-term borrowing only lasts for a certain amount of time. We are gonna have to turn this into a long-term borrowing, because we're going to have to pay the money back. Or we're going to have to pay the money out of our cash. So, I just wanna make sure you guys understand that there is cash, there is money sitting there, do we wanna deplete it down to zero? Probably not, but I've heard that we had two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I've heard that we have four hundred. I've heard all these numbers going around at meetings that we just didn't have the money to pay for the storm, and that's just not the case. And I don't think it's because anybody was trying to do anything. You know, I, I don't, I don't wanna accuse anybody of anything, but I think that it's just a lack of understanding of how the funds and the cash actually work.
We're all taxpayers here, Cynthia, and neighbors, please feel free to speak bluntly.
Well, I think I do, pretty much most of the time, don't I?
You do, but I'm, I'm saying, don't, don't feel this, you know, I mean, we wanted to. I do it right.
Yeah, I think it's a lack of understanding of fund accounting, and I'm, I, I think that this is a start of getting everybody to understand. Um, that process and what it means, but we have been hearing for years that the reason we're keeping this enormous surplus. Is for another, another devastating storm like Irene, and here we are, and we didn't use the surplus, we borrowed money. So that's what's concerning me as a financial person and as a taxpayer.
Thank you. Paul?
Seems to me that it'd be reasonable to wait to hear from our auditors to find out exactly what. We do have for surplus. And we did, you did have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in surplus that you've already spent, correct? Isn't that true?
That's correct.
The hundred.
The emergency reserve fund.
That was a hundred, that's a hundred and fifty thousand.
A hundred of capital, of, uh, kind of capital.
Oh, cash flow, yeah.
Cash flow stuff, they've already spent two hundred and fifty thousand of that. So theoretically, that's only extra money from last year. We don't know yet, there, there is gonna. This, this, at the end of this, of twenty twenty-one, but we don't know what that figure is yet. It seems to me reasonable to wait to hear from Chad, the auditor, to say, okay, this is what you do have in excess.
Before the last meeting, I'll him, and he did get, finally get back to me, Jordan did. Told us that with the adjustments, that the. Surplus moving into FY twenty-three will be in the vicinity of three hundred and, um, eighty thousand dollars.
FY twenty-two or twenty-three?
End of FY twenty-two, moving into FY twenty-three, so at town meeting, we'd have to address that.
How, he, there's no way for him to know that, Russ, we haven't even spent money for FY twenty-two yet. He can't forecast FY twenty-three.
End of twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Sorry, yes, you're.
Last school year, what's the last school year?
FY twenty-one, my fault.
So that is a significant amount of money, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Right, which is what I said in, it, what I just said was we had three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars coming into the year.
We didn't know that figure.
No.
Until last week, that was fairly speculative.
It, it, it's, okay, so I'm gonna disagree with that, because. First of all, you should not be relying on your auditors for what your surplus is, they should be verifying the number you give them. Second of all, unless there's some gross mistake, which Darlene didn't catch at the end of the year, creating the financial statements for the auditor, then the number is what it is. I mean, we shouldn't be waiting for the auditor to tell us what our surplus is. We.
Continue.
Uh, that's, it's just the, it's the wrong way of thinking. The auditor is not our accountant. He is checking our numbers.
I'm not disputing any numbers that you have. When we saw, when we talked about funding for that storm, we were told with the information provided was two fifty that we had available.
Mm-hmm.
We needed the additional to be able to pay contractors. I had never, I hadn't heard that dollar figure of four hundred and change till last week.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I don't know how to, it'd be, we'd be speculating that we had that money at that point. Right? Am I using the right term? I'm, I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with you, I just.
No, I don't feel, I, well, I guess the problem is, is that Darlene, who helped with the end of the year financial statements, was never asked how much you had. Had she been asked before the meeting that you decided to borrow the money, she would have been able to work through that and help you with that. So I, I think we, I think I need to move past that. We've borrowed the money. Now it's just a, 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 maybe a training process so that you guys understand how to read the reports, so that when you do make these decisions, you do have all of the numbers in front of you.
Can I ask you a question?
I guess that's where I'm at.
You keep bringing up borrowing money against what we have. And I'm looking at, I mean, never knew you could borrow money against the funds you have. Cause I do look at this community improvement loan. We got a hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars sitting there that we don't use. But we, so what you're saying is if we were in an emergency, we could have actually gone in, take money out of that and as long as we paid it back? Is that what you're saying?
What's the process to do that?
Let's, all right, so let me just, I think, does that one have a separate checking account, Darlene?
Uh, yeah, that one has a separate checking account. So that's probably not a good.
That's not a good example, but all of the other ones? The money sitting in your cash account, it's called pooled cash?
Reappraisal fund, that's the amount of money we keep setting aside in case we do it. So let's just say this, over the next two years, we're not going to do a reappraisal. Can I borrow against that one?
Right, so, so when you spend money, let's say you spend money on the storm, okay? And you're, you're depleting your actual physical cash in your checking account. There's a possibility that you are going below what the general fund actually has for cash that's pooled. So you, you're going to be taking money from these other funds. This might not specifically be reappraisal. It's just an ebb and flow of money coming in and money going out into all of these funds. The, the software tracks it automatically based on where you do your spending.
And I provided you guys a due to, do from report. So if you look at that one sheet, that's what Cynthia is talking about. It was one sheet, it's called due to from. And that's the borrowing and paying back between funds.
So at any point, so let's use the reappraisal fund as the example. At any point during this process, if you had to make, make a fund hole because they started spending money out of it and you had no more cash, then yes, the town have, would have to borrow and, and give them the money. So, or give that fund the money. But typically it doesn't happen because there's so much money coming in and going out all the time. And with the, the really high surplus that you guys have, it's, it really, you would have to be way overspending for a long time to ever run out of the physical cash. And I'll give you an example, in, in Putney, when we never had to borrow in anticipation of taxes because we had the water and sewer fund that were constantly bringing money in. So if the general fund ran low of cash, we were using some of that money and then when the taxes got paid, we replenished it. But it's a natural replenishment through the software and the way that it actually does the automated due to from process.
Okay, I have a question, this is Susan. So uh, to go, so it's the way I'm understanding it. So last May, we, at our special town meeting, we allocated the, the taxpayers allocated our surplus. It was insisted that we had to vote on how that surplus would be spent.
Mm-hmm.
Now we would be spending, say, you're saying for the storm, that we would use that surplus, even though the taxpayers have not told us we could do that. So then at next town meeting, there would be some way that the, the taxpayers would retroactively say, uh, yes, that's fine that you spent the surplus on the storm damage?
Well, the surplus that you allocated, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, was the hundred thousand dollars. And then there was some other ones that are, were allocated to like maybe reserves somewhere to bridges and stuff. That's been moved. And the hundred thousand, so I'm talking about the three hundred thousand dollar surplus that you have is my, is already taking that hundred thousand dollars out of it. So yes, if you depleted the entire thing, you still have obligated the hundred thousand. So at that point you would borrow. I'm not saying there's no point that you wouldn't borrow because we run out of money, because we have to make whole all those things that are reserved and you voted on. But it's timing of that borrowing. And I know money is cheap, but it, to be honest with you, it just makes you more mindful of your spending when you've got to be careful and not when you have a half a million dollars at your disposal to just spend when, if you need, if you think you need it. So it's just a, it's a management of your finances that I've never seen a town borrow that much money when they have that much money on cash on hand. Until you know that, okay, we're getting this money back through something, either the state or the feds or something.
Although we, we have not borrowed it, we have a line of credit. So we've actually only borrowed about half of it at this point. So it's there as an insurance fund, which we have spent part of.
So how much have you drawn from the line of credit?
Two hundred and twenty five thousand.
So the two twenty five and then the hundred and fifty?
Two hundred and fifty. We took the working capital and a hundred and fifty from the emergency fund, all from the reserve fund balance policy. So actually spent five hundred and fifty, but we've only allocated funds for four hundred and seventy five of it.
Yeah.
So we still have seventy five thousand not addressed to date.
It's just a difference of um, I don't know what I want to say. I, I, I think, I think I just, I think we just wanted to just make the point that that there's a need for an understanding of the fund accounting and how you can borrow against yourselves. That's all.
And that's, that's very clear. Thank you.
Um, yeah, and thank you for um, all that you do uh, in these um, and the input that you give us. At this point, um, I'd like to make a motion that um, we make, uh, we have Darlene Kelly give us a monthly, at one of our two meetings, uh, give us a monthly synopsis, um, exactly similar of what she's doing now. Until such time as um, you know, we are all in agreement as to um, the policy, the proceeds, how the money's being allocated. And uh, we're all up to speed on where the money is and how it can be addressed. And specifically, I'm interested very much, Cynthia, in um, the construct of um, utilizing money from the, utilizing money from these other funds in order to avoid um, your concern over immediately going to a loan uh, during an emergency. Uh, so I'd like to make that motion to have Darlene give us a report um, every once a month at one of the two meetings.
Second that.
Can we make the form? Maybe going way back to when Paul was there. We keep coming up with different, so we never have anything long enough that we can just, every meeting, almost look at and go, I understand it. Seems like every time we turn around, we keep changing the format of what we're trying to do. So what I like to do is have her come back with a format that, one is we understand what it is. And two is that we all agree that this is the format that we want to see. So we, we can try to learn and understand it all. It's just every time you hand me something, I gotta, it takes longer to understand where the numbers came from.
Uh, yeah, and uh, uh, you know, that's a great point, Craig. And that's part of the whole financial, um, the whole part of this process, why Nemrick has come in uh, with the, with the book. So Darlene, um, uh, is that something that you could do? Come up with um, something maybe um, a little less uh, large S, something that's kind of small and uh, um, something we can really take a look at and set us up for the long term to where we're, that's what we look at and everyone that comes on the board here after, this is our, this is the protocol and this is how we look at it. Is that possible?
Yeah, oh yes, definitely. We can make it a much easier to read and you can follow along and then you can see. We can do, you know, the change from, you know, we can put it in so that you can see, okay, last month we said it was this, this is what it's changed to now. We could definitely do that, so.
Wonderful, and having you um, come to one of the two meetings every month, is that possible?
Yep, that should be a problem.
Thank you, but any business you work with, you, what you rely on is actually having these that you're looking at last year. So the longer we have it, you can look at and go, okay. Cause I look at some of these numbers, I don't know where we're really supposed to be at, fifty percent or forty percent. Depends on when you're buying the heat and when you're not buying this and all that. But at least you had the system that's just simple, easy one and then you could keep it. And the next year you go, look, well, this is where we were a year ago at this time. So it looks good or it doesn't look good. That's all.
No, that's an excellent.
I like this format.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think Darlene, if you could get it to them, you know, I don't know when Russ sends the complete packet out to them, but if they had a couple of days before the meeting to kind of absorb the.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, my apologies for this last minute. That was my first go around at what we were doing, so.
Not at all, and uh, oh, uh, with Craig's motion, uh, Craig's additive and everyone's in agreement um, to have Darlene um, do this and report to us um, uh, once every month at our two meetings. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Terrific, um, again, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, absolutely, please, sir.
On guardrails, how are we over that already?
So.
Just a question.
Our car hit the guardrails. I paid for them out of my budget. We got reimbursed by insurance company, but it goes back to your general fund. That money doesn't come back to me.
I got you.
So it looks like I overspent, but in actuality, I didn't. We actually got reimbursed for all that.
And you got more money than you're supposed to, so you still owe us this money for guardrails.
Yeah, that's right. So, but that's why I wanted to separate my budget from the general fund.
Let's just clear up.
That, exact reason, yes. Cause for people looking at it, it looks like I'm constantly overspending and stuff. If I get a grant, same thing, I pay for it out of my budget. You know, different things like, for instance, I'm looking at a, a equipment grant, okay, for a leaf board. So I buy that out of my budget. Let's say my budget's close, I pay for it, I get reimbursed, but it never shows where it came back.
There's a credit back to you.
It's not a credit back to me. It looks like I overspent, when in actuality I saved it down money. So.
So Darlene, probably what you could do too is when you get your report ready for them, if you run into stuff like that, maybe you and Chuck should get together and you can just notate it on the budget report so that those questions are answered. You know, so that you know, and I mean, a lot of them will stay the same. Like this is an, a, a grant that we're spending it on and here's the revenue side of it. That way, until they decide that you, they want you to break out the highway from the general fund, that will help just notate those things that, that might, you might have questions on and he can answer.
Yep, and just to be clear, the reason you can't do that, Chuck, is you know, that's not proper accounting process to net your revenues and your expenses, so the auditors wouldn't like that. So that's why you can't go against your expense to show you have an overspend. Is it has to show in a revenue line and the expense has to show in the expense line.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, so that's just why it has to get reported the way it does, because that's the proper accounting process.
But you would still have, so it wouldn't go back into the general fund with everything. It would be my own, like, what Rock and Eam does, if they have a grant, that grant has its own line item. So it's totally transparent, you can see it right there. So it's easier come town meeting time for everybody to track exactly what's wrong.
Okay.
I don't know what Putney's doing, but.
And you know, this process is, again, having Nemrick in here as experts that do this every day. Uh, technology and the world's moving fast. Um, our town, our beautiful old town, we also are evolving to meet that. And that's the whole purpose of having them as a strategic partner. And I think this is a great uh, example of what they bring to the table.
But you think guardrails bad, would you look at a storm expense for next year?
Yeah.
We're going to go, Chuck, you really blew your budget.
Any more comments? From general public? Okay, uh, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Cynthia, Darlene. I gotta get up at three o'clock, I gotta go.
Paul, thank you very much for being here.
Thanks, bye. Good travel.
Be safe. Okay, that brings us to seven twenty nine, twenty one storm, progress update.
Uh, we're not quite done, that line item. Um, do you want to go over the first two pages of the um, budget? As you requested, at least the first page.
Yes.
Um, I'll make a comment right away. So um, the uh, COLA here is two point five percent. But I'm, um, in the last couple of years, we've uh, we've made it less than three percent. But I'm wondering if, given inflation next year, we want to drive back to three percent, at least in the budget? Or no?
Comments?
Well, I'm just thinking, it's, it's, there's inflation this year, still.
Oh, yes.
Um, and we tried to peg the um, employee raises to the cost of living increases, which we did last year. And if it's, if anybody has a crystal ball can think what it's going to be when we vote on uh, employee COLAs next year. Do we want to have enough in the budget to cover the actual cost of living? Anyway, that's just a comment.
No, I'm, I'm, unless you agree with, the only problem is sometimes they think they're automatically going to get it when we actually address it when that time comes. But I'm with you, we're, these are budget numbers, so.
I think we just have to be clear when we, you know, vote on that in June, that this is what the cost of living is and.
Excellent point. Um, while you just add, um, I've always been taught that he or she that uses the crystal ball will one hundred percent of the time eat glass. Um, so that's a good point. Um, inflation, obviously, we all read about it, we all know about it. Um, you know, I, I too, uh, I'm with Sue on this. I mean, uh, inflation in the intermediate period, in the very least, I think it's reasonable to say is going to be considerably higher than we normally would anticipate, given the unique events of the last nineteen months. And I certainly would be amenable to changing that figure to a higher number.
I don't have a problem with, well, three percent, whatever.
Yeah.
I'm just saying realistically.
Three percent?
That's what I say.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, yeah. As we know, if things are different next June, then it doesn't have to be three percent. It's more surplus. It's more surplus.
Any comments on that from the public? Okay. Further comments?
I'd like to take line item by line on it, if you would.
Please, then proceed.
Selectmen's salary, as you can see, it's been constant for eight plus years.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I, I, I'm sorry. What, what agenda item are you under?
Still the financial discussion.
Oh, okay, so you're working on the budget for next year?
Going over the first page that we started last meeting.
Oh, I guess I missed that. Sorry, I was confused where we were. I thought we were talking about the storm, thanks.
Okay, comments?
I have no problems, you think it as it is.
I don't either.
Any issues there? Is anybody? Okay.
Clerk's salary, we went up two years ago.
Are we okay there?
We should be fine. Social Security is based on the COLA and was done last year, I'll adjust that.
Please.
Retirement is the same thing. Health insurance, the figures have not come out yet. The perspective is saying something like 5% for the remainder of FY '22, which would be in part of the FY '23, so that's all we can predict. So I will, when the information comes in, I will bring this back. So this item should be tabled until further information is available.
Okay, so, so table?
Selectmen's expenses seems to be running up and down. The $4,000 seems to be working right now. I just put it as level funded, but that's what will be your call.
And that's fact TV plus?
Select Board needs, if you, if you did tablets, which we've been talking about, you know, anything like that.
Why is there a zero next, yes, the next one?
So are we all set with that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The next one, it hasn't come in yet, it should have been read. But I will have information soon on that.
Okay, so that's an update. Our computer software, Nemrick?
Computer expenses, yes. It goes up roughly about 5% each year. Again, we haven't got that figure, but it's pretty common that it goes to that point. But I will check into it before we finalize that number.
Okay.
Did that include, or does that include the money that we were paying Russ for the website update? It wasn't very much, I know, but.
That would be out of that line, probably, yes. Yes.
Contract services, computer contract services?
Again, hasn't come in yet. So we will come back to that.
Okay, school merger expense, have we covered that, right?
Yes, I, I have to continue using it because it still has monies.
All right, so the total number still needs to be adjusted based on your acquisition of additional outliers, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, any other, any questions on this portion before we move forward? Okay. Total office supplies?
Miscellaneous, again, it's a bouncing ball, but it looks to be that we, last year, we spent $3,000 on, on an item that we had only $1,750 in the budget. So we went, again, maintained it last year. And then this year, it looks to be like we're going to go over that also. Miscellaneous can be anything from paper to, to requests for bids. The, that's just a miscellaneous item so that we have a place to cover all of our requests that we don't know what's coming up in the year.
So given the greater cost of everything, should we put in maybe like 2,000?
I had 2,800, but it's up to you.
Oh, you didn't write that in, so.
Yeah, it's in here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, got it. I'm on the page now.
Town meeting expenses?
That is still okay. We were worried that it was going to go up beyond us because it, the company changed, but it didn't. So we should be able to maintain that.
Volunteer recognition?
The same thing, the plaques and clocks are the same place and yes, that's, that's.
Advertising for legal notices, bid requests?
Again, it's, it all depends on the year, but maintains about a, about a $4,000 average. Would be, safe to say, more legal notices are needed and more bid requests have been apparent, so.
Vermont League Cities and Towns?
They have not gone back to us, but typically it's a 5% increase. But I will be getting that information shortly.
Okay, training, meetings and materials?
You've been maintaining the $300 for many years. I don't see a need to go up until it's apparent that you, COVID is over and you guys start using it for meetings outside this town.
The Wyndham Regional Planning?
Typically, they go up to 5%, but they have not declared their raise either.
Okay, that's an outlier as well. Insurance?
Same thing. We have not, we're just barely getting our information requests from VLCT to property and casualty, workman's comp and unemployment.
Any whisper numbers for that? I mean, that sounds to me like something that could seriously be a little higher than normal.
It could be a little bit higher. But again, it typically is about 5%. So that's what that number is. But I, again, when it comes, becomes very apparent, we'll, we'll get right after it.
Legal services?
You could see that FY '21, we jumped to almost 15,000. That is not the normal. So I would, I would think and I hope we could keep it to the 8,500 level fund, that one.
Quite a variation from year to year.
It is, it all depends on, on our need.
Yeah.
You never can tell.
Town office phones?
That one I'm going to check on. They had been going up just like the electricity, but they kind of maintained right now. We changed companies to Citricom, which has been a very good move for us. So I'm estimating, but I will be coming back to you with more information on that.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns on the select board on what we've covered so far? Seeing none, let's move to the town report. Town report staff, administrative hours.
Kelly placing all of the information that she receives from all the allocations, school and fire, and puts them all together into the town report and creates it. The bulk mailing, as you can see, has gone down because less people are asking for it to be mailed. They come get it, which is really nice. And the actual cost of the town report outsourced has, has kind of maintained its, its dollar amount. And we're printing a few less than what we, we used to have, three or four boxes left. That's just wasteful. And so we've cut it down to a manageable amount of a box, maybe a box and a half left.
That's what we have left now.
That's what we do. So that's why we can maintain that.
Moving on to the executive department, salaries and wages, salary town manager.
Okay, again, I use the two percent. And that's up to you folks.
We're to the second page.
Very good.
The problem is, we don't have, we've gone past some, we don't, we don't still have enough numbers.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't. It's, it's early, but if you don't start now, Craig, you'll get it done.
We really didn't answer any questions for you because we're still waiting for some.
Some of these answers.
Second page, they're all blue too, so.
All right. We will look at it and it's good to start early. Okay, we now concluded with the financial discussion.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we can move on to 72921 Storm and the progress update thereof.
Financially, we, we went over it. Again, we've spent to date $550,000 plus or minus. And how we paid for that is the $250,000 from the emergency and working capital and the 225 from the line of credit, making it 475. The difference is 75,000, which has not been addressed. I don't know what your pleasure is on this, whether we let it ride, use funds from the general fund as have been explained to us tonight? Or do we cover it with the line of credit? That would be your call and I'm telling you right now that we, today, we've spent 75,000 that's been not addressed.
Well, did we make a decision that we would not get a line of credit or?
We already have the line of credit. It's whether we take out more money out of the line of credit to cover this. Or do you let it ride?
That is a loan, right? The line of credit.
Right now, it's just a line of credit. And it's a loan, but it, there's no.
But we already talked about this and we decided that we would not loan, use a loan if there's money available.
I mean, after what Cynthia, we just discussed, sounds like we can at least get by with the next three weeks and come back to us without having to dip into the loan. Unless we're business up. We hired this firm to come back with information that reassures us that we don't need to borrow.
And I'm good with that, knowing now that we have the 380,000 from surplus. So we will not. So I, I'm, I'm fine with it. It's up to you guys. It's, it's.
What are our major outstanding, Henwood Hill or Covered Bridge?
We're putting, we're putting some things out to bid as we speak. That's my manager. Saying that out loud, it's, Henwood Covered Bridges is, went out today.
Yeah.
Chuck and I went through a list of contractors and we sent letters. We have the front entrance, that's gone out to bid, and our trash has gone out to bid. Those three things. Trash, of course, won't have any impact on our budget for another whole year. But the entrance has been earmarked from surplus last year to get the entrance completed.
I want to back to storm a minute. So Covered Bridge, that's still outstanding and.
We have, we have a lot more money to spend on the storm damage.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, we're not done by any means.
So, moving it. Given what we know, what we have, are we to authorize our, our town manager to go ahead and utilize the 75,000 from the general fund?
Can I, Kevin, it's Cynthia.
Go ahead.
I would, in the next week or the next few days, have Russ and Darlene sit down and do an analysis of where you're at, what you think the expenditures are going to be in the next few weeks. Look at your cash flow, what money, do, give yourself a cash flow analysis so that you guys, we can really understand. I think somebody just said it, work with us. Have, have him talk to Darlene and have them sort that out as to where they are and how much in the next couple of weeks they think they're going to have to spend on the storm. Because it's really, I know you have the cash, but I don't know what your next few weeks look like with bills coming in. And that's something Darlene can, can work with you guys on, that cash flow analysis. That suggestion. And, and then I would probably give him the go ahead to do whatever the two of them come up with as to the best next step to help pay for this storm. I'd let them work together on it. I think, like you said, we're a partner in this. We want to make sure that, that we're giving you the best information to make the best decision. And I want him to start using Darlene for that, that, and, and Nemrick for that, that advice and that information.
Or our strategic partner, and as another excellent suggestion, and one that I certainly think we should adopt.
So Cynthia, we have three weeks until next meeting. So we're comfortable between now and the next meeting, we're going to be able to pay bills and get by without borrowing any money.
I believe that, yes. I believe if Darlene is asked that, she will agree with that. There's lots of money sitting in the bank account, yes.
Yes. I agree.
But I also don't know how much they expect for bills next week. I mean, I just heard the number of 75,000. I don't know if there's another 100,000 coming in, another, I don't know. And that's why you have to work with, with the manager to find that out.
Yep.
Did you want to, thank you both very much. Did you want to, Chuck, did you want to chime in on where you think we're going to be? What it's worth? Even though they'll be meeting together?
So I would, I would say right now, we're probably 75% done.
Okay.
75% as far as money or as far as mileage or?
No, as far as damage.
Yeah.
So we've got 75% of the damage taken care of. So.
But for tonight, as long as we can live three more weeks and get the information, come back to us. We're not saying we're done spending money. We're just saying we've got enough to get through the next three weeks and pay our bills.
I would not be surprised if you made up another $250,000 before this was done.
Well, I think the idea of figuring it out would be a good one, you know, then everybody will know.
So Russ will sit with Darlene?
Yes.
And come up with a schematic that fits what we have to have done? Any other comments on the storm and the progress?
Thanks, everybody.
Okay. Highway Department, discussion?
So I would like to extend our summer hours. Right now, we work four days a week. And with all the contractors working, we are supposed to be switching back to five days a week, getting done at 2:30 in the afternoon. Well, that doesn't work out real well. We're working with contractors to get stuff done. So I'd like to extend that until we get things a little better under control. Weather providing, I mean, it starts snowing, obviously, things have got to be switched up a little bit and change, change the program. That's one thing. I also, do you have that grant that I showed you? The grant for the borer?
No, I don't have that in the packet.
Okay. Well, at some point, you're going to see, what can you go after a grant for a three-point hitched leafboard to go in the back of the tractor, which blows the leaves out of these stones that we put in all over? We've got one now, it's, it's old, it's showing signs of wear. Grants and aid as a program where we can buy one and we, it's a $5,000 borer. We would have to match $1,000. So I just, I think it's a good deal. It's a good time to jump on it. And when the time comes, you guys are going to have to sign the grant, so.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck. There's also been discussion, I'll bring it up as a chair of the structure, the Highway Department, and perhaps visiting the current structure, revisiting the current structure, how the apparatus is set up, but perhaps the way it currently functions now as far as entity can be examined and changed. Whether it's a permanent change or not changed at all, or an experimentation period to see if we can better utilize our resources and our expense ratios. Also complimenting the Highway Department and Chuck Lawrence and Russ and the entire team for doing an outstanding and exceptional job. But it has come that there has been a discussion or perhaps a need to revisit how the Highway Department is structured. And perhaps discussing that now, at least briefly, and getting it on the table as to how we might look forward to looking at it as maybe even a more detached entity as far as administration discussion.
I'm, I'm basically what you're saying. I think being involved with a lot of different town formats and everything, the size of our town. And with this whole, not just the storm, with this Act sixty-four and all this, what's going on? Most every town I end up dealing with, it's getting me a different role of the road commissioners or the road foreman or the assistant foreman. There's different formats and it seems to be that the job that Chuck is doing, the job of the town manager, sometimes there's one in the middle and sometimes. But I think we should start to look at the highway standing a little bit more on its own. They would, they would be a little more involved with taking care of the bids and taking care of the contract and looking at that role. Meanwhile, the town manager will still have full control over the monies, what's going on. But the day-to-day operation and all that, I think that we should start to look at it. One is even Chuck's not a, not a super young person and he's got a young crew. And I think we need to encourage them to be more involved with decision-making. And because all you're doing is, and I see Chuck, I'll tell him, you're running out to get prices for covert. You're running out to look at jobs. You're running out to deal with all the vendors you're dealing with, all the contractors. And it's not going to change. It's getting worse and worse. You can spend days just going out and trying to find how to buy gravel and where to put gravel. We're asking a lot more from the town managers who do other roles. And I almost think that if we need to start discussing that with Chuck and does he have help enough to help him out in the shop so he can start to take more of a role of what Russ is doing? This is where I'd like to see us to start.
And now, well, that would separate out the budget too. We'd have a separate budget and that would require a separate vote to, by the town or?
I don't think you should go that.
Yeah, yeah. You've got revenue and you've got expenditures. You're going to, it's going to be just like the fire district separated.
Right, just like the fire district.
We could. I'm not saying I'm sold on any of it. I'm just like, we need you to start pursuing it. We start to look at it. Are we do, we're asking more from the town managers to do other work too. I mean, we're asking them, we used to have more people in that building besides what we had now because we had more people involved with the listing and all that. And we're asking more and more. But meanwhile, the highway is almost a separate whole entity that they're out there doing stuff. And I really think the future down the road, we're going to have to learn to share more with other towns. Equipment, resources, it's going to take more time for somebody like Chuck to be out talking to them. One day, we might be helping Putney to help us. All these things are, you're not really doing from an office. You're doing because you're working next to those people, whether it's grafting, whether it's brokering ham or whether it's cutney. It's, to me, that's real important down the road where we're going. And I think we should just, just as a starter conversation, but I think we should start to have, have a discussion and heading in that direction that it might not make sense, but at least we can look at it different ways. I deal with a lot of different towns. They're all changing. Every time the road foreman quits, the next one, it seems to be two people taking over. One that's just doing the paperwork and working with the town manager and one who's actually out there, what they call foreman of the job, that person's overseeing. And I don't think it's ever going to change. With, with the amount of miles we have, every town that has eighty miles has seven people on the crew. And that's just about where we are. We have in the eighties to ninety miles of highway and we'll have seven people. It's to get more and more work out of those seven without having to spend all this time on the phone and doing different things is what it is. And I mean, years ago, when I got on, we didn't have to have road foremans and flag guys on every job. Now he goes out to do a job. He's only really got one person working, three people standing there and you got no choice. And it's all about, he's going to have to make a decision that some days I'm going to be cheaper to go get a a flag crew to come in and do the contract so we can do it. Those are all stuff that he has to be there making those decisions. And, and I think that's where we're going.
Good idea. Yeah. Russ, what's your opinion on that?
I, I really don't have one, other than I'd like to know how that's going to affect our state aid, the highway state aid to the town. We just had a separation of, of the fire districts. The whole time was pilot. So would that be the same thing? Would the Highway Department receive their own allocations from the state? And what would that do to the, to the bottom line? And as a whole, is it, is it beneficial to receive more monies or is it, doesn't matter, it's a percentage and bang, it's, it's separated? And I just would want to know all of that.
I think at the end of the day, if you had so much in this hand, so much in this hand, you still had the same amount.
That's what I hope, but it...
It might make a step in there somewhere or something.
Kevin, Kevin, this is Darlene. So I don't see that separating it between funds doesn't act like the fire district. Your fire district is a total separate entity from what you're doing. The highway is part of the town. It's already a part of your budget. If you just made it clearer to taxpayers and Chuck so he can manage his stuff by separating it into a fund, you're not asking for anything different than you already have, just like Jason just said. You're just making it clear to understand what's happening in that department on your financials. I'm only talking about that. All the other stuff is up to you guys. But for your financials, that, you're just moving that stuff. You're not giving him money. It's just going into a separate refund to report differently. That's how I operated in other, and see that in many of the other towns I work with. It's very common. And you don't treat them as a separate entity. They're still a part of the town. They're just a different fund on your balance sheet in your budget actual or your budget status.
Agree with you a hundred percent.
Very easy. And I think it's a lot more transparent, honestly.
And that's where we want to get to, right? If I may interject, right? Compliance and operational evolution is really unfortunate what everything is about, whether you're in private industry or even small towns.
I absolutely agree. And as a taxpayer, I would, I, it bothers me that it's not more transparent. Then you can clearly see, you know, in a given year, is this because of an issue related to a hot, you know, like the storm? Right now, the way it reads, nobody can clearly understand all that money was spent on the storm because it sits in that expense in selectmen. Let's, you know, it has not, nowhere until people start asking or drilling down, have they have any idea by looking at your financials that that is highway-related?
And again, appreciate, again, your excellent input on that. And that was why we're going to just sum, finish that too, which is called the after-action memo. We'll have an after-action memo on the storm. What we did really well, what we could have maybe done better, some of the things we may have learned. And certainly not only from, as you pointed, the importance of transparency in the financial side, but the ability to get our crews out there. And in this particular case, they did an exceptional job. We were stressed to hold the best contractors who were being pulled in every direction, being able to make sure that we could pay them, being maybe like sure that we could keep them longer, to make sure that we met our ability to keep people safe and get the roads open, which they did the greatest job ever. The portion of structure though, there's also, as you said, that's something for us to discuss. That's something that we can look into too, because experimentation to make sure we maybe could do better on, with our compliance and operational role and transparency and performance by taking a look at how we structure that, that, the Highway Department. And that was simply what we were, you know, I was bringing up. And I think it's been a good discussion. Unless anyone has something else to add?
Okay.
Okay. We've heard from everyone. Thank you very, very much. Moving on to the invoice for the school district.
We tabled that.
We tabled that. Okay, thank you. And now publishing names of the deceased for the town report. I was brought up last time.
It was brought up last time. It's just that it would be nice to be able to have the names of folks in the town report that have passed away in the town of Westminster. I did a little research for you guys and why it was dropped and all of that. And so the first one was in two thousand and seven vital statistics is why we dropped the names and just put the statistics. The second page is, is just for your eyes only, is the people that have passed away in the town. And the third is what folks have to sign now by asking for death certificates. Because it has been such problems with identity theft of the deceased. I can tell you firsthand that both of my parents have passed and we had a bear of a time with fraud cases against their names. Both had different problems, but all folks, their names are published enough. And to have them published in a, in an open document, just as asking for problems. And that's why most towns have deleted them, including the births, because again, young children are just getting their social security numbers, et cetera. And that information gets, be stolen. It's a different world we live in and it's unfortunate. I, I, I used to love to read the births, the marriages and the deaths in town. Some I knew, some I didn't. But I understand why the clerks are staying firm with this, that towns don't do it anymore. And this is why, is because of the possibility of, of personal theft from their accounts.
People have obituaries in the newspaper. You know, it's not like nobody knows they died.
I'm telling you what, what I was asked to find out, Toby. This is exactly what I experienced was the phone calls, the emails, the mail, asking for more funds from accounts that didn't, never existed. The research, the time and the energy they spent to, to put their, their accounts to rest were substantial for me. Did you have something? Oh, I'm sorry.
I have comments.
Please.
I've talked to Donna Dawson because she was on the Gazette Board and they do a nice thing, which is remembrances. People who have died, guess their names, let it be in the town report. And she said they ask relatives if it would be okay. She thinks it's really not a big issue that people will be going back to the town report. And I mean, there are better ways to get information on people who have died. So I don't think it's a big issue, but you know, I don't have a big investment either. And you know, the clerks feel strongly about it. Fine, but...
It's, it's public information. They can get it. I mean, this, it isn't like we're, we're releasing anything that, oh, you're not supposed to release it. It's there. Anybody can call up the town right now if they really wanted to hack you and go, hey, give us, we want to see who passed. They can see it. And I'm going, of all the people, you think, all the good residents of the town be kind of nice, they'll look at and go, Mr. Allen passed away. Trying to get rid of him as a selectman, but.
By the time it's in the town report, like a year, almost a year has gone by.
Yeah. I, I totally agree too. And I appreciate though the prudent caution that you have and wise counsel, Russell. But I'm okay with it if everyone else is.
I just, I don't feel strongly either way. I, I can see both sides. But I mean, it mattered a lot to me. I appreciate giving the sheet. There were several on here that I didn't know. And I go, oh, man, now when I run into their mother, their father, or brother, sister, I go, oh, I didn't know you lost your mother or father. I just feel like I wasn't blindsided and hey, how's your mom doing? And find out she passed away a year ago, you know?
Select Board, what's your pleasure?
I'd be in favor of including the names of the people who passed away in the previews here.
I mean, I think a lot of the stuff you're talking about, you know, your parents might have had, you know, a lot of people that knew about them before they died. So therefore they pursued, you know?
Being criminals?
No, no, I don't mean criminals. But for example, if they gave money to an organization and then the organization really wants to see it.
In, in almost every year, we, we pick one of these persons to be in our book anyways.
Right, that's true.
Formal motion or do we just want to take a straw vote?
I just, yeah, I'm just in favor. I don't think it's up to you whether you want a motion or not. We'll go for a book.
All in favor to include them?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Okay, so decision has been made to include publishing the names of the deceased in the town report to honor their memory.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cemetery deeds.
In your packet, you have three requests for single burial plots. Missing one, sorry. Actually, the last one low is asking for three. This one's a little convoluted. He has six. They're scattered throughout the Westminster West Cemetery. He's requesting three in a row. So he's, we're buying back three and selling him three. Yeah, we're buying back three and he's getting three new ones, all contiguous. So...
What would that motion sound like?
Just want to make sure the town manager, everything's in order. No issues.
It is. There's no issues. We have, we've had a lot of go-around with the lows and we finally got an answer for them that made sense to them. So...
Want to make a stab at the motion?
And I just, you can do all three at the same time.
Okay.
You have the originals, Kevin. It's stamped on the back. So please, those are the ones to sign.
Yes. I'm signing all three?
Yes.
Okay.
Your name's on everyone.
No, it's only on one.
No, I get all three, all three. No, he's only on one.
Two.
I'm on one.
He's on the last one.
Oh, I get two.
So that's okay. I got all three.
You're the duly authorized agent.
Yeah, no, we're two different people.
Just doesn't leave your name listed on the other one.
The two, whatever.
I move that we approve the three cemetery deeds as presented and printed to the Select Board. Second, is that adequate?
That's kind of...
I don't have, one, one is my cousin, but I don't have two crews most likely.
No.
No.
A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Make sure you let my cousin know I voted for him.
Okay, manager's report.
If you could, yes. Wait a minute, we have a welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome package.
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's right. I'll make this quick. So Pauline, apparently, a town clerk, said that she had been dealing with nude people coming to town and it would be great if we could have some sort of a welcome packet. We've talked about this before.
Yeah, that's important.
So to get things going, I suggested the old committee.
Russell, yep.
So I'm going to see if Pauline and I can get together and maybe somebody else who wants to...
I'd love to. Since I've been on this board, I've been asking for it.
I know. Well, I think assembling the information is what's going to be.
Yes. And a lot of times we listen to the input of the Realtors because they're the ones who said, yeah, we, here's a home and then go in and this is a welcome package. We had a little version of it. Russ was working on it one time.
Yeah, and we do have that, which we, we have given all of the new people, which is a substantial amount this year, this past year.
Right, yeah.
But typically, they come to the town hall and we give it to them. But it would be really nice to have, well, even simple things as groceries. These folks came sight unseen. Our next door neighbor was right here. Maureen Young sold to the, I don't even want to say the name. Can't think of it. Do something. Anyway, doesn't matter. They came in and, and the whole family came in and literally had not a clue where, where church is, where food is, where any entertainment is, the schools. They, I mean, just keep naming things that we take for granted. They had no idea. They had no idea where to do. So we, that was actually the three of us and we spent time, you know, explaining different things. We did the trash. We did the, the schools. They're going to homeschool their two youngest.
The trash alone is probably a big, people aren't used to dealing with it that way.
Texas.
Where I care take, they are, they don't do it that way.
Massachusetts is important.
They just don't. And it's hard to get that through.
Texas actually, apparently, their town did a pretty good job with it, but they were impressed. Texas actually, apparently, their town did a pretty good job with it, but they were impressed with curbside. They didn't have to bring it anywhere, so
Excellent idea.
So I'll, I'll get with her, and we'll see anybody else who wants to.
Can we, can we add that if they're moving on to a dirt road, it's only dirt 15% of the time, the rest of the time, it's either bow or snow?
Don't buy it for us. I know, I know.
A, a copy of that policy, though, could be in.
I don't think she's the one to go.
That's right.
If you have a policy, put it in the packet.
Yeah.
What's that?
We have a roads policy. Just put it in the packet. It's an FYI.
Yeah, exactly.
Living out in the snow, the
If you've got any complaints, have a picture of Chucky and his cell phone. This is the person you wanna see.
That's all right.
I thought Babs had something when she was here. We booked with some info in it. It was never like a packet.
I'm glad she's excited about that.
Honestly, I, I don't know.
That was a great idea.
Never seen it.
A great idea.
Little update stuff.
Okay, any other comments on that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Managers report.
So we met, Chuck and I met with the USDA representative. It is a program that gives towns the ability to apply for extra funding for water-related incidents that were not covered by, like, a FEMA incident. So it's not storm-related, it's water-related. Chuck brought my attention near Kern Hatton. We have a bank sloughing off that's right tight to Kern Hatton Road. Water is, is doing it, and it's, it's part of the problem. So we showed him, you know, that piece. He looked at Piggery, where the water is coming in and taking our dirt, and it's getting very sheared, right tight to the Piggery Road, not anything to do with the, the covert. It's just the bank. Uh, he looked at that one, and you brought him to South.
I, I took him to Davidson Hill. I took him to South Street where that retaining wall is beginning to fail there, the slope. Um, those do not qualify for any, yeah, for any funding. It's gotta be stream-related, so it's gotta, so Piggery Road, because the stream changed course, and it's eroding the bank out, caused it to slide, that would qualify. He hasn't actually looked at Kern Hatton. I called him and left him a message to come back and look at it, because I found it after he had been there, so.
So anyway, it's just a FYI that there is funding, and, and different possibility. I told you about this, but I'll tell you again. We set out three bids this week. The trash and recycling curbside pickup is due for another three-year contract. All of the bids are, are due in the middle of October. Bids are out for the front entrance, again, due in the middle of October, and the bid for the Henwood Covered Bridge Road went out today. 14 letters. I, and I'm, I'm willing to listen. We get no response from an article in the newspaper anymore. It's better that we send letters. They, they receive them. They, if they're interested, they call immediately. If they're not, then they, then they, they just don't. But in the newspaper, it is such a crapshoot that, that no one saw it, because they don't get newspapers anymore. And the Gazette is very limited to just Westminster residents. The Rattaburre reformer is being read less and less by our our area, and to send it to Keene Sentinel, we're talking a thousand bucks before you even blink, just for one single request proposal. So what I did, like I said, I sent out 14 letters to, to every area contractor. I went with, I went through the list with Chuck, and we added a couple, took away a couple. But anyway, so we're hoping that's the best way to get at least three or four bids for the Henwood Covered Bridge Road.
See how it works.
So.
Russ, have you checked into going on to the state bid form on it there? Because you can put it on anytime you want. It eliminates like the three bids, and it basically, I've had more towns with, they'll just say, they don't even send it to me. They just said, go on to the state website, go on there, and it'll say a bid for this such and such.
We put one out there, and we never received anything.
You don't, but it covers your ability that you actually did send it out to and normally what you do is you actually put it there, then you call five, six, seven, and said, here, the bid's right there, and they just download it, and you're done. So you don't send it to them. You just get on and call all the local ones and say, you want it, it's right there. And then it eliminates anybody questioning you sending it out, because it's the state of Vermont who actually put it on your site.
Okay.
Vermont Business Registry.
I believe it's free, Russell.
Yeah, it was, anyway. The last time I used it.
Okay, they'll check into it. Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah. Uh, no, sorry, that's it.
Okay, boards and commissions.
I have nothing to report.
Any other business?
I have nothing.
I move we adjourn.
It's always Toby making that noise.
Yeah, I can always count on it. We have a motion to adjourn until October 13th, 2021. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.